Deputy Lieutenant, Councillors, Ladies and Gentlemen, Good Evening, and Welcome to Charnwood Borough Council Annual Council Meeting. I would like to run through some housekeeping arrangements. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and the sound recording will be made available on the council's website. Under the openness of local government bodies' regulations, people may film, record, tweet or blog this meeting, and this is outside the council's control. I would also like to remind councillors and other people attending the meeting that the fire exits are to the rear and side of the room. There are no fire alarm tests planned for this evening. Could I also ask that everyone turns off their mobile phones or switches them to silent so that the meeting is not disturbed? I would also like to remind councillors that when they speak, they are required to stand if they are able to do so to address the meeting. This is a requirement of the council's constitution. The first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. I have had apologies from the following: Honorary Alderman, Bush and Tormy. Are there any other apologies? I see no raised hands, thank you. I will now move on to item two, appointment of Mayor. I call on councillor Hamilton to move the appointment of a Mayor of the Borough of Charnwood for 2023/24.
Deputy Lieutenant, Madam Mayor, Honorary Freeman, Honorary Alderman, Past Mayors, Councillors and Honourable Guests, I move that councillor Smidowicz be elected Mayor of the Borough of Charnwood for the 2023/24 council year and until her successor becomes entitled to act as Mayor. It is a pleasure to be given the opportunity to nominate this person for Mayor, but the first thing I wish to clear up this evening is who exactly I am nominating. This councillor is known by many names. This is because people seem to struggle to pronounce her surname. Is it Smidowicz? Smidowitz? Smidowwich? Smidowitz? I can confirm that it is, and I hope I'm correct here, pronounced Smidowitz. As in councillor Margaret Smidowicz is constantly driven to her wits' end by people mispronouncing her surname, so please have the wits to remember that it is Smidowitz. So hopefully that clears things up. It was because of the war that her parents and siblings were evacuated from London to Beckingsfield in Buckinghamshire. And unfortunately, their London home ended up being destroyed in the Blitz. But it was into this bucolic Buckinghamshire setting that some years later councillor Smidowicz became a rather late and perhaps a bit of a surprise addition to the family. As we look at this solid, respectable, model citizen that is councillor Smidowicz today, you may infer that she must have been a well-behaved, disciplined and above all obedient child. The reality was an independent-minded tomboy of a girl who explored her rural world with Sally, her dog, and she would often be found climbing trees and haystacks. Even on school days, she would pass time whilst wasting on the bus by leapfrogging over gravestones. Just pause and hold that mental image in your head of Margaret leapfrogging over gravestones. Looking back on her childhood, councillor Smidowicz will say that she perhaps lacked confidence in adults whom she perceived as neither reliable nor fair, which we may interpret to be that she was frequently in trouble and was no stranger to the school cane at a strict convent school. The downside of being a bit of a rebel is that sometimes you risk getting the blame when it wasn't your fault. It was perhaps this that helped fuel her sense of justice. She always made sure that she did own up to the things when she did wrong. Once, when she was particularly unhappy with school, she actually played truant for a day, but her sense of justice meant that she then went and reported herself to her father. At thirteen, she eventually escaped the convent school when she moved to Reading with her mother and, in the fullness of time, ended up working at the Midlands Bank. As an independently-minded young lady, she had no plans to settle down and get married, but then she met a rather quiet American, Frank Smidowicz, and that was that. Married to an American military man resulted in a somewhat peripatetic life, being based in a navy base in Texas, in Cairo, Mississippi, and she even found herself spending time in Ghana. But eventually, they settled in Loughborough. It was a marriage that was to bless her with three children and later on in life, three grandchildren. Margaret never had any real long-term plan in life, but recognised that doors open, doors close, and opportunities are there to be taken as they arise. She resumed her education as a mature student at Loughborough College, initially perhaps just to get a local secretarial job, but she continued with her studies, which eventually led to a Masters in Human Resources and Strategy, studying the culture of organisations, and an appreciation that the focus should always be on people, as it is people that make things happen. She ended up with a career in academia in a variety of roles across these Midlands, from lecturing to business development manager to teacher training. She has taught all ages from sixteen to sixty, and believes in the power of education to give people opportunities to achieve their own goals. The drive and energy exhibited in her early youth, coupled with her sense of justice and providing opportunity for others, has led her to being an active member of our community: a governor at both Delisle School and Ratcliffe College, a trustee of the Carpenter's Arms, clerk at a local Alms House charity, and of course, a local Borough councillor. I am certain that councillor Smidowicz shall embrace the role of Mayor with all the focus and energy and sense of duty that she has applied to all the other roles that she has performed. I am also sure that she will be a valuable ambassador for her chosen good causes of men and women in sheds and in channeling the experiences in her own family to the raising awareness of the somewhat under-discussed issue of head and neck cancer, such as highlighting the work of the Swallows Head and Neck Cancer Support Group. As I said at the beginning, it has been a pleasure to be given the opportunity to propose the nomination of councillor Margaret Smidowicz to be the next Mayor of the Borough of Charnwood. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. I call upon councillor Baines to second the motion.
Deputy Lieutenant, Madam Mayor, Honorary Freeman, Honorary Alderman, Past Mayors, Councillors and Honourable Guests, I second the motion that councillor Smidowicz be elected Mayor of the Borough of Charnwood for the 23/24 council year and until her successor becomes entitled to act as Mayor. I know that councillor Smidowicz has not taken on this job lightly. I know this because she was asked to stand as Mayor three times by her party leader, and this is actually the first time she's accepted. She was recalcitrant not because she didn't want the job, but because she felt she needed to earn it, and in her view, she had much to do in her ward and on Cabinet before she felt worthy of accepting the post. But worthy she is, Madam Mayor. All I can say is to councillor Smidowicz, gotcha. She's likely to preside over several hundred events as Mayor, but this should be no problem for a woman of her calibre. Her theme is going to be can-do, and she displays this characteristic in spades. Ever since she was first elected in Loughborough and Nantpanton in 2011, she's been grafting. She was roped into political work and being a councillor at a garden party in 2009 after asking a tad too many political questions. Little did she know that looking forward to next year, she'd end up at the King's Garden Party at Buckingham Palace in 2024, splendiferous in her chains. Whilst a councillor and Cabinet Member for Regulatory Services, HMOs, houses of multiple occupation, and Enforcement and Lead Member for Democratic and Strategic Services, councillor Smidowicz has accomplished much of what she set out to achieve. She's done a lot to shape the housing of multiple occupation licensing policy that the council employs today. And she took on the services of a professor and his PhD student at Loughborough University to map the entire area to determine just how prevalent such a housing situation is, since much of it was and remains hidden, and I think we found four and a half thousand HMOs at the time, and there are probably many more. She managed to obtain a £54,000 grant, support the development of playing fields in Nantpanton, and another £30,000 to hire a conservation officer in the borough to review conservation areas and get these formally signed off. So councillor Smidowicz has definitely got what it takes to be first citizen of the Borough. She's a tough egg. She survived being held up at gunpoint in the Egyptian desert. Her coach driver had to hand over his cigarettes and money, and Margaret handed over precisely nothing. She also nearly died of cerebral malaria on one African joint, a disease which has had a high mortality rate at the time and probably still does, and she didn't even know that she'd had it until a doctor told her after a scan. She has a motto: There's those that watch other people doing things, those that do things, and those that don't notice what's happening. And she's the middle one, a doer. She married US Marine Frank, as councillor Hamilton said, as a child bride. He was in Construction Battalion, formed after the Pearl Harbour Crisis, and their motto was can-do. So some of this clearly rubbed off on councillor Smidowicz. She was married to Frank for forty-five years before he sadly died of head and neck cancer. This cause will therefore be the focus of a charitable fundraising, as well as, as councillor Hamilton mentioned, men and women in sheds, the Loughborough Base Charity sponsored by Leicestershire and Rutland Age UK. She's had a long history of serving the community: school governor for eighteen years, leaving as vice-chair, academic boards that she chaired, but she was also a justice of the peace for twenty-three years. She's presided over quite a few wrong-ends over the years, tackling criminal and domestic violence, family court and drugs and rehabilitation cases. With this history and with three children and three grandchildren, looking after fifty-two rowdy councillors should be a doddle. But she's a clever lady too: bachelors, diplomas, one professional, one postgraduate, masters, all of which she did as a mature student, all in business studies and HRM, human resource management. She's had a long history of lecturing on NVQs, BTEx, H&amp;Cs, H&amp;Ds, professional courses at various colleges. She actually introduced the first management course for women at South Nottingham College, and at Stephenson College she taught CIPD courses and did quite a bit of teacher training work. Her forte was adapting and creating courses. Many of her students went on to university at a time when far fewer people were going to university, and later she set up her own consultancy, doing open university tutoring and in-company work. All in all, councillor Smidowicz is a formidable woman, a woman of duty, and so she's not likely to shirk the job of Mayor of Charnwood. I expect she will put her all into it and into her fundraising, and I know she'll be an excellent Mayor and that Timothy will be an excellent consort for her. Thank you, Margaret, for taking on this challenge. We all wish you the very best for the mayoral year ahead, and may the mayoral fourths be with you.
Thank you councillor Baines. I now put this motion to the meeting. Could I see all those in favour? I believe that's unanimous. Congratulations councillor Smidowicz. I invite you to formally accept your election and sign the Declaration of Acceptance of Office.
Do you, councillor Margaret Smidowicz, having been elected to the office of Mayor, hereby declare that you take the office upon yourself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of your judgement and ability?
I do.
Congratulations. I'd like you to sign the Declaration of Acceptance of Office.
I really don't think there's much more I can tell you. Deputy Lieutenant, Honorary Freeman, Honorary Alderman, Past Mayors, Councillors and Honourable Guests, I have experienced many defining moments in my life, but never have I felt so privileged and humbled that my fellow councillors have elected me to be the fiftieth Mayor of Charnwood Borough. In that capacity, I would like to extend a welcome to each of you this evening, and particularly for those who are councillors who are new to the role. I must thank the outgoing Mayor as well and her husband for their dedication in what has been a challenging year. My family have been a huge support for me. They not only keep me grounded, but volunteered my son-in-law to be my consort, so no mother-in-law jokes are allowed now. As I start my mayoral year, I would also like, on this occasion, to acknowledge our council staff. As a recent Member of Cabinet, I know how well they have responded and with incredible speed to the reorganisation of the Borough during a period of unexpected national events. They have navigated us seamlessly into what is now the Carolean era. King Charles, in his speech, said that he wanted his reign to be one of servitude and collaboration, recognising the importance of volunteers. I promise to play my part in emulating his example and recognise that it is people that make things happen. My chosen theme for my year is can-do, as you've already heard, can-do, and together we can do it a lot better. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, there will now be a short adjournment. We're now at item three, and this is a vote of thanks to the retiring Mayor. I call on councillor Baines to propose the vote of thanks.
Madam Mayor, I move that this council tenders to councillor Jennifer Tillotson its thanks for the service she has provided as Mayor of the Borough of Charnwood and for the way in which she has presided over the council's business during the past council year. The council records its gratitude for the manner in which she has maintained her position and the position of the mayoralty, and the work she has done in meeting so many people in the Borough throughout the year. The council also extends its thanks to John Tillotson for his services as the Mayor's consort and for the help and support that he has provided to the Mayor, and for the considerate and committed way in which he has undertaken his role. The council assures both councillor Tillotson and John Tillotson that they have the best wishes of all its members for their future health and wellbeing. Well, what can I say about councillor Tillotson and the years that she's had as Mayor? I know it's been a whirlwind for her. She's attended a massive, three-hundred-and-twenty-three events this year, an enormous increase on the mayoral visits during the Covid period, leaving her very little time for her hobbies of sowing, cycling and gardening, and participating in the events of the Stage Left Theatre Workshop, of which she was a founder member. So she's been very busy getting around the Borough, getting it back to business as usual, but not completely as usual, because right from the off, she attended Queen Elizabeth II's Platinum Jubilee events in the Borough, events supporting the only ever British monarch to reign for seventy years since Athelstan became the first King of England in 925 AD. Of these events, perhaps the lighting of the beacon in Queen's Park on June 22 was perhaps the most memorable for her, of which she was one of one and a half thousand lighting of the beacon events running throughout the nation. She was delighted to name Loughborough resident Stephen Hutchins, who was born on Queen Elizabeth II's accession to the throne in 1952, the winner to light the beacon in what became a very spiritual event nationwide, I think. Councillor Tillotson herself is now immortalised with a heritage plaque celebrating the Lake Queen's Platinum Jubilee on the wall of Charnwood Museum. As a theatre buff and someone with a long background in the arts and leisure, Jenny really enjoyed the performances she saw at the town hall, one of which included Calendar Girls. I'm not sure, though, that she enjoyed it so much that she intends to entice the middle-aged women of Charnwood into launching their own nude calendar initiative for charity, though this would have to be rainbows if she does, because she worked tirelessly for them throughout the year. She also saw and enjoyed Sweeney Todd, the murderous barber of Penny Dreadful's Victorian fiction fame. I'm happy to report that whilst we have quite a lot of barbers in Charnwood, including some in Loughborough who offer the cut-throat knife method of shaving, none of them appear lethal, and on the contrary, I find most to be quite affable and chatty. Several months later, we had the sad news that the Queen had died. The Mayor was called upon to lead the mourning of the people of Charnwood and recognise Her Majesty's extraordinary service towards her people. Madam Mayor also read the proclamation in Queen's Park announcing the beginning of the reign of King Charles III with over 1,000 people in attendance. Madam Mayor also attended quite a number of events involving the university, and particularly enjoyed the Student Achievement Awards she attended twice at the beginning and end of the year. Councillor Morgan at the beginning of her year said her middle name was stamina, and we know that must be true, because she sat through all eighteen graduation ceremonies for Loughborough University and Loughborough College, quite an achievement. In another event in her packed agenda, Madam Mayor welcomed the Commonwealth Games torch relay to Loughborough. relay to Loughborough. She had the tricky challenge of getting from the university to the town centre before the athlete carrying the baton, no mean achievement given the speed at which they could run. And she managed to achieve that via the ever-helpful and fast Carol Hardy, her chauffeur and civic officer. I must stress that no speed limits were broken during this achievement. I was personally delighted that Madam Mayor was able to attend my abseil off the 212ft 85met Derby Cathedral. I was joined on the day by my brother Mark and two friends, Paul Angrave and Claire Pritchard, and with gift aid, Team Tilletson, as we called ourselves, managed to raise over £2,000 for the Mayor's Fund for Rainbows. In Madam Mayor, resplendent in her chains, I had the best cheerleader of anyone that day. I also had a couple of builders heckling me for a couple of frightening moments, telling me to get down because it was dangerous. No kidding. They thought I was staging a protest, apparently. Madam Mayor had a couple of occasions where she had to be hoisted up, hands under bottom, onto something during her year, and as a dignified lady who takes her appearance seriously, such touching up presented something of a dilemma. On Armed Forces Day, it was a man in uniform helping her up onto an army vehicle with tyres bigger than the mayor herself. At the Great Remston Steam and Country Show, councillor Tilletson was hoisted up onto a tractor, though she turned down the overzealous offer of such help from the man with oily These events have caused Charmwood's First Lady some sleepless nights. Her concern: is there any photographic evidence? Councillor Tilletson is proud of the support the boroughs provided to Ukrainian refugees and the hosts who have provided their support in opening up their homes. She took time to meet them and learn more about their sacrifices and concerns. She also attended Ukrainian vigils a year on from the beginning of this awful and unnecessary conflict, and I know she would like us to do more. Well, as the eve draws on councillor Tilletson's own reign over Charmwood as mayor, I know she'll look back with both a sense of pride in what she herself has achieved, seen, seen rewarded and admired, but I also know that she's going to miss it. Being first citizen of Charmwood has been a real honour for her, she told me so much. Perhaps she's wondering what to do from here on. Well, she certainly has the opportunity to become a stand-up comedian, should she so desire. I say this because I organised the Burns Night Supper in aid of Living Without Abuse in January this year, attended by the great and the good, including Madam Mayor, who gave one of the funniest speeches I've ever heard. Given living without abuse is concerned with domestic and sexual abuse, and given around 90% of the victims are usually female, her speech began: Not all men are... and I'll give you a clue as to what the next word was, it began with a B and ended in Rs. She went on to have the audience in stitches. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for all that you and your consort John have done for Charmwood in your mayoral year. I hope you agree, it's been a very memorable one. Thank you.
I call on councillor Mia to second the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on obtaining the section. Thank you. Deputy Lieutenant, Madam Mayor, Honorary Freeman, Honorary Alderman, Past Mayors, Councillors and Honoured Guests. I have the pleasure in seconding this vote of thanks to the retiring mayor, councillor Jennifer Tilletson. I look at everything that councillor Baines has said about the wonderful and full year that you've had as mayor. 323 engagements, it is amazing what our mayors do. Councillor Smidovic, you've got a tough act to follow, I think. First citizens of the borough, and rightly so. From the celebrations of the Lake Queen's Platinum Jubilee, with events all over the borough, including the hugely symbolic beacon lighting in Queen's Park, to attending Buckingham Palace as part of the coronation celebrations for the new king, and everything in between. If you're going to pick a year to be mayor, Jenny, this was probably the one. I hope you enjoyed all the food, and the cakes, and the drinks, and the chauffeuring around, and meeting all those wonderful people, and having Carol at your beck and call... but glancing over at Carol, I think you were at her beck and call. No, we aren't jealous, are we, fellow councillors? I was fortunate enough to join you in some of those events. They are always well-attended and fun to be involved in. The beacon lighting in Queen's Park, and unveiling of several plaques dotted across the borough that will immortalise your name as our mayor long passed this year, so we don't share notes, honest. The mayor is also a vital link to our friends in Europe, and I know that you've attended a visit in our twin town in Belgium, and as part of your year greeted twin town visitors from Shabishole. Events I know you very much enjoyed. My favourite event is always the mayor's charity dinner. Not, I must add, for the food, but because it was another step to you raising a tremendous amount of money for your mayor's charity, Rainbows, a charity I know you hold dear to your heart. At this stage, I must confess to avoiding one of the mayor's events. It's not often or ever that you do this, but on this occasion I had a diary clash. In my defence, the event was the abseil down the cathedral. As a fundraiser for the mayor's charity, you wouldn't get me up there, 300 and something feet, did you say? I would also like to thank the mayor's consort, John Tilletson, who has been at the mayor's side this year. Please accept our thanks and gratitude for giving up your time to be there with the mayor. Councillor Tilletson, you've had a wonderful year, a busy year, and a year that will be steeped in historic events. I'm sure you've enjoyed it. Thank you very much for being our mayor.
I now call on councillor Jennifer Tilletson to reply. Sorry, I've jumped the gun. I now put this motion to the meeting. Could I see all in favour? That looks to be unanimous. I now call on councillor Jennifer Tilletson to reply to the vote of thanks.
Deputy Lieutenant, Madam Mayor, Honorary Freeman, Honorary Alderman, Past Mayors, Councillors and Honoured Guests. Thank you for those kind words. I will try and not be too repetitive when I talk about my year. It's hard to believe that it's been a year, it's gone so fast, and I'll tell you a little bit more about those events, but before I do, I need to make some thanks myself. First to my husband, John, who's accompanied me when he could. Sadly, he's not well enough to be here tonight. But I also have to thank my family, who've supported me, especially my daughter Lisa, who is here, sorry. Gosh, I didn't think I was going to do this. Who is here tonight? And she's accompanied me many times, and has taken time off work to do so quite often. I want to thank everyone who's supported me in raising money for my charity, Rainbows, especially councillor Baines, who you heard jumped off a tall building for me, and by happy coincidence, Morrison's Loughborough, who also had Rainbows as their charity of the year. And together, we were able to raise over £6,500, way exceeding my expectations. So thank you to everyone who attended events, and to councillor Baines there. I also want to thank councillor Smidovic, who's been a deputy and has attended quite a number of events when I've been double booked, and also to Reverend Wendy Dalrymple, who's been my chaplain. And finally, my thanks must go to our award-winning civic officer, Carol Hardy. I'm her 27th mayor, so Margaret will be her 28th, and her wealth and knowledge is simply irreplaceable. Thank you, Carol. And a little note for Margaret here, and for future mayors. Taxis have drivers, mayors have chauffeurs. As was pointed out to me. So, the highlights of my year. I knew it was to be the Queen's Platinum Jubilee, and I attended a number of celebratory events, including afternoon tea at the Great Central Railway. This was attended by a number of historic characters, including Winston Churchill and King George VI, also known as Les Copneuman. Thank you, Les. I unveiled a plaque, as you've heard. In fact, I unveiled two plaques, one to commemorate the Platinum Jubilee, and one that I sincerely hope I never see again, because it was in a dementia care centre, so I prefer not to see that one again. When I attended the lighting of the beacon, my husband, John, did point out that beacons are supposed to be seen from a distance, and a beacon in Queen's Park will be seen, well, in Queen's Park. But there is a beacon on Beacon Hill, the name's a bit of a giveaway, but that was lit by the Chair of the County Council, so we lit one in Queen's Park, and a good evening it was. As you've heard, I've attended over 300 events, and one of the first and last events, because I attended it twice, was at the Students' Union, listening to all the voluntary and charitable work that students do. And it was really good to hear a positive contribution about what many, many students do do, because we hear lots about the irresponsible behaviour of students, so it was really good to hear about the good things they do as well. I had the pleasure of cutting a ribbon on a new boat for the Peter Lamarchant Trust, and as we approached the canal, Carol did point out to me that I needed to be careful not to fall into the canal, because should I do so, she would be rescuing the chain and not me. Should I come up with it, all the better. Fortunately, we didn't have to put that to the test, and as the canal boat was fully wheelchair-accessible, it was wonderful to have a look round it. You heard that on a hot July afternoon, I attended the Remston Steam Fair, which culminated in a ride, as you heard, not a tractor, a traction engine, really high up there, and the Commonwealth Games, you heard, and we had to dash from the university into the town centre. And I also, in July, attended the university graduations. Now, that was a real challenge, because as the temperature soared to 40 degrees, and there I am and everyone else is in their robes, the air conditioning failed, so that was a challenge. I've attended twinning events across the borough and had the pleasure of visiting Jean Blaue, and visitors from Jean Blaue are actually here in Loughborough this week. They're at a skittle evening tonight. The mayor, as you know, is the monarch's representative in the borough, so shortly after I became mayor, I was given a copy of the protocol, which would be followed should the Queen die during the year. And I can remember saying, oh, she's good for another five years. Well, of course, I was wrong, and when the death was announced, Operation London Bridge swung into action. And most significantly was the proclamation in Queen's Park that happened all over the country. I opened an exhibition to commemorate 50 years since Ugandan Asians came to Loughborough, and I opened the Loughborough Fair, as mayors have been doing for over 800 years. We held two children's competitions this year to switch on the Christmas lights and to design my Christmas card, and I really loved going into the schools to tell the children that they'd won the competition. One little girl, the one who won the Christmas card competition, she was literally speechless. She was just stunned that she'd won. I attended many Carol concerts, and I started the Santa Fun Run, but the outstanding event of the winter season was the Winter Solstice on Beacon Hill. I was told it was the first time that the mayor had been invited, so I wasn't sure what to expect, but I certainly wasn't expecting the amount of wind and rain. There was mead to drink, which was very pleasant, or it would have been if the paper cup it was served in wasn't disintegrating in the rain. My only consolation, that was because I was wearing the chain, Carol had to be there too, not sat in the warm and dry in the car. We were going on to a Carol concert, and we were honestly, we were both soaked to the skin. We had a well-deserved break over Christmas, and then I attended Burns Supper in aid of councillor Baines' charity, and I attended several Holocaust memorial events and opened a sports pavilion. I was at Taylor's Bell Foundry to witness the casting of the Hope Bell, which will be the centre of a memorial to those affected by the pandemic, and this will be installed in Queen's Park next year. There's going to be the Loughborough version of Monopoly, which will be available for Christmas, I believe. I've not played Monopoly for years, but I'm really, I don't know why, excited about it. I shall certainly be buying one. I opened the Camber Beer Festival, which returned to Loughborough Town Hall after a 20-year absence, and, as I said at the beginning, most of my family have attended events with me, when John hasn't been well enough, and my son-in-law was most upset that he wasn't invited to accompany me to the Camber Beer Festival. I hosted several civic services, including a commemoration service for Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth, and a service to celebrate the coronation of King Charles and Queen Camilla, all organised by Reverend Dalrymple and Carol Hardy. Along with my daughter Lisa, I attended a Buckingham Palace garden party held to celebrate the coronation. What a year this has been, in many ways a normal year as we recover from the pandemic, but there will never be another year where the monarch has a Platinum Jubilee, followed by their death, and then the coronation of their successor. It truly has been the privilege of my life to be the mayor of Charmwood, especially in this incredible year. And finally, my very best wishes to councillor Smidovic for her successful year. Thank you.
You've run off. Madam Mayor, could I ask if you could come down and join me for a moment, please? I know you've just sat back down, but could you come back up here again, councillor Tilletson? And on behalf of councillor John Tilletson, I'm promoting him, aren't I? John Tilletson, Lisa, can you accept past consort's badge on his behalf, please? Thank you. You're allowed to go and sit down again now. Thank you.
There's not a lot I can say to add to the wonderful work Jenny has done this year. I cannot tell you what a privilege it's been, just to deputise and be the mayor's apprentice. For me, that's been a real joy. I think I've managed about 16, 17 events on her behalf, but it's been a learning experience, and when I say it's going to be a hard act to follow, I really mean that. I don't want to climb Belfry or Tars. I'm a bit worried about getting on tractors. I had enough trouble when we had the fair, and I couldn't get on the carousel. So if anybody's got any ideas for discreet, ladylike sort of ventures, please let me know, will you? But thank you, Jenny, you've really done us proud. There's not a lot I can say to that, but you really will be a hard act to follow. So, once again. So on that note, we move on to item four, the appointment of the deputy mayor. I call on councillor Boca to move the appointment of deputy mayor of the Borough of Charmwood for 2023/2024. I call on councillor Boca to move the appointment of Deputy Mayor of the Borough of Charmwood for 2023/2024.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I call on councillor- no, that's me. I move that councillor Bradshaw, MBE, be elected Deputy Mayor of the Borough of Charmwood for 2023/24 council year.
Madam Mayor, I second the motion.
I now put this motion to the meeting. Could I see all those in favour? Yes, the motion is carried. So congratulations councillor Bradshaw. Please step forward to sign your declaration of acceptance of office.
Do you, councillor Dr Julie Bradshaw, MBE, having been elected to the office of Deputy Mayor, hereby declare that you take that office upon yourself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it, according to the best of your judgment and ability?
The next item is item five, disclosure of pecuniary interests and other registrable and non-registrable interests. I call on the Chief Executive to report on disclosures of interests in the business to be considered at the meeting, which have been made by councillors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No interests have been declared to me.
So members of the council, please indicate whether you have any other interests to disclose in any item of business to be considered at this meeting. There are none. So we'll move on to the next item, item six, which are the minutes. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 27th of February 2023 be confirmed and signed. Madam Mayor.
I second the motion.
Could I see all those in favour? The motion is carried. We now have the appointment of the Leader of the Council, which is item seven on page 18 in the agenda papers. You'll find it is a report setting out the nomination for Leader of the Council for the 2023 to 24 to 26 to 27 council term. I call on councillor Hamilton to propose the motion.
Madam Mayor, to make an appointment to the position of Leader of the Council in accordance with the Local Government Act 2000 and section 9.1 of the council's constitution. I move that councillor Mia be appointed as Leader of the Council for the council term 2023/24 to 2026/27.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I second this motion and I reserve my right to speak later. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Forrest. Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Baines.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, I'd like to recommend that councillors in the Conservative and Green parties and our sole independent vote against the election of councillor Mia as Leader of Charmwood Borough Council. I say this because it would be wholly undemocratic for a minority party with only 20 seats out of 52 to lead the council for the next four years. Even if the Labour Party is supported in a coalition with the Greens, they'll have only 28 votes, assuming they can get everyone to out to vote every time. This will give them a majority of only five seats, not much of a margin. And this assumes the Greens will vote mindlessly for Labour on every issue. What's the point of being a Green councillor if you vote for Labour on all their issues? What's in it for the Green councillors? It would make much more sense for the Greens to vote with the Conservatives on issues on which we have some agreement, including carbon reduction, net zero, strengthening our local communities, increasing everyone's quality of life. We believe passionately in the latter, in not taxing everyone more than they can afford, particularly given the cost of living increases many are feeling in the borough as a result of Russia's needless war in Ukraine, the result of increase in energy costs and food price inflation. We question whether the Greens in coalition with Labour will be able to respond to the problems Charmwood Borough Council faces, including getting a five-year housing supply sorted, significantly improving resident satisfaction, significantly increasing commercial revenues and improving the efficiency of major contracts with which the council has for its major suppliers. Based on what we've seen over the last four years of Labour opposition, we struggle to see how the Labour Group will solve these problems, if it even recognises that these are the problems that need solving. We say that because for many years the Labour Group have continuously requested money be spent on public toilets for Loughborough, with no consideration for anywhere else in the borough and for £1 million of residents' hard-earned cash to be spent on improving the energy rating of our council housing. Expenditure recommendations seem to be the only thing that they understand at a time when the council is struggling with limited funding. Indeed, for the first three of the last four years, Labour struggled to put forward any ideas for a budget of their own. And surprisingly, they attended few, if any, cabinet meetings. So I urge Green councillors and our independent councillor to join with Conservative colleagues to vote down councillor Julmeier as a minority Labour council leader for the simple reason that a Labour minority administration propped up by the Charmwood Green Party would be undemocratic. And I'd like to request a named vote, Madam Mayor.
So councillor Snart, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations. I wish to support the details in the well-thought-out speech by councillor Paul Baines. In my view, after Charmwood Borough Council having a strong Conservative administration over the past 16 years, now is not the time to change to this uncertain coalition of Labour and Greens. I recall when I first elected to this council, my party were in opposition to a Labour and Liberal Democrat administration. That lasted four years. Perhaps the Green councillors present tonight would like to reflect on this and note there are no Liberal Democrats now on this council. Before I could support this motion, it would have been good to understand the arrangements that have been made between Labour councillors and the Greens in this coalition of minority parties. Perhaps the Green Party councillors will have the opportunity during this debate to enlighten the council on how they fit with the promises made by the Labour Group during their election period. This was also raised by my colleague councillor Paul Baines, where he questioned whether the Greens in coalition will be able to respond to the issues Charmwood Borough Council faces at this critical time. Indeed, it would be interesting to hear the details of the coalition between the two parties. The Labour Party, propped up by the Greens, may have the numbers to get this motion through tonight. But I believe without the understanding how this coalition are going to maintain strong leadership throughout the next four years, I have concluded that I must vote against this motion for many of the reasons outlined by my colleague Paul Baines. I support the named vote.
Madam Mayor, can I just second the, to request for a named vote, please? I don't have much to say other than the coalition between the Labours and the Greens, it's full of a lack of experience. We need a council now that's going to deliver, especially at a time when budgets are limited. We need councillors that are going to deliver what's needed for this council. And I don't believe any of the opposition can do that. The Conservative Party are the party that can deliver what is needed right now for this borough. And it's disappointing if the Greens decide to vote with Labour tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Lee Harper-Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and also can I please accept my congratulations for your appointment this evening. We're delighted on behalf of our group. I would actually like to reiterate what councillor Baines has said. We fully support as a party and endorse all councillor Baines's statement. And I think all we have to say, vote Greens, vote Labour, and it's a very sad day for us all. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment. I wish you a successful year. For the last four years, all I've heard from the Labour Group opposite is that a town council is the way to go for Loughborough. That's all they've spoken about for the last four years. Loughborough is their focus and not all of the villages in Charmwood, leaving most of us here and on the Greens side neglected and not given a second thought while they concentrate their focus on Loughborough. They will waste time, energy and money on trying to set up a town council, which will just not be possible. The funding is just not there. This is not what my residents voted for, and I doubt the residents who voted Green voted for this either. I would not be supporting this motion, but I do support a named vote.
Thank you. Councillor Needham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please accept our congratulations as well. So I know that members opposite keep using the word coalition, but we've been very clear about this, that it's not a coalition and we will support Labour to form- well, that's what we've said from day one. We are going to support Labour to go into minority administration based on shared values and support tonight. We want to make sure there's a stable transition for everybody in the borough. It's not about party politics, it's about doing the right thing for the residents. Members opposite, no for a fact that- I'm sorry, I wasn't going to bring this up tonight, but the communication from the Conservative group was mixed and confusing at best. The communication from the Labour Group gave us much more confidence and we had shared values, common ground and allowed us to focus on the things that the voters wanted us to focus on during our campaigns. We did not get the same from the Conservative group, unfortunately. We were very open to listening to both sides before making any decisions, but it was never really an option, given that we were told conflicting things from the Conservative group. So we will be very much standing on the issues we were elected on. As I said, our first priority is Charmwood and its residents and making sure that the council can actually function and deliver on its services. We don't feel we need to compromise any of our values with this arrangement. And we hope that we would really hope to see all the good things that the members opposite said about delivering good services, working on all those things that you mentioned councillor Baines. We'd hope to still be collaboratively working across the council on those things with councillors of experience and people with different abilities and expertise. And we think we should all work together for the best interest of the borough. So the election results, I mean, you're saying you have the most number of councillors, but unfortunately you did not get a majority. The voters clearly voted not for the more of the same, they voted for change. And we can't ignore that. And we also can't leave the council with no functioning administration. So that's why we will be supporting this motion. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Charles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm reassured to hear from councillor Needham that residents are going to come first. I'm sure we can all agree that as elected council members, it should be our first and overriding priority to represent our residents. My question to our new Green Party members is how will your residents be feeling now? The residents of Seyston, Salisbury, Seagrave and the Reek Valley. They will have voted Green and will probably have ended up with a Labour-run council. You should be asking yourselves, if you cannot support the policies of a Labour administration, then why would you be responsible for inflicting one upon your residents? That would be irresponsible, in my view, and I'm sure that your residents will judge you by it.
Councillor Boca, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is to all councillors. You have heard from my Conservative colleagues, who have clearly put forward the case for not giving Labour control of this council. But now it's up to the Greens, who claim they are somehow independent of any party on this council. Yet despite this claim, they have immediately chosen to form an alliance with Labour to put them in control. Is that really going to be their message to the over 9,000 electors who back the Greens in Charmwood? No one really voted Labour in these wards, only Conservatives and Green in what was a close contest in two wards. The Greens could easily have agreed to support us, the largest group, but chose instead to back Labour almost as soon as the results were announced on the 5th of May. But this proposed minority Labour administration is based on a manifesto which is not costed, totally impractical and unlikely to be delivered. Let us not forget what they have promised the electorate. A new town council for Loughborough, an expensive all-electric fleet of council vehicles, building new council houses, any energy-efficient grants to homeowners, replace choice-based lettings, which ironically was a scheme introduced by the last Labour government, and so on and so on. Who exactly will be paying for all of this? The voters do not want these pie in the sky ideas. They want efficient waste collection, community safety, high-quality services, financial support for local community projects, quality public sector housing and licensing for rogue landlords, et cetera. All delivered without huge borrowing or high council tax. Although we lost seats, the Conservatives actually increased their vote by over 8% since 2019. A reflection of the fact that under Jonathan Morgan's excellent leadership, we saw Charmwood steer through the pandemic with its finances intact and retaining the services which the residents value so dearly. And that is what we on this side of the chamber want to continue to do. We want cost-effective local government meeting the needs of local residents. That is why I would urge councillors to vote against this motion and call on the Greens to prove that they really are independent and demonstrate that they are not just propping up Labour.
Councillor Boca, I'm really sorry, but your time is up. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor?
Councillor Haynes. If the Conservatives had actually got onto the doorsteps and asked the people who were voting what they wanted, they would have clearly known that in our wards that they didn't want the Conservatives. They clearly wanted Green. And it was very much a vote against the Conservatives as well as a vote for the Greens. We're talking about democracy. The people in our wards voted for us. That is democracy. We will act in the best interest of our electorate to do whatever we think is right for them. We will act in the best interest of our electorate to do whatever we think is right for them. That may be supporting Labour most of the time. If it happens to be occasionally, it's not what Labour is suggesting, we will not vote for Labour. It's as simple as that.
So councillor Sandy Forrest? You reserved your right to speak, I believe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're fortunate enough to live in a democracy, and we saw democracy in action on May 4, when the electors of Charmwood, the voters, the people, roundly rejected the Tory administration. They didn't want them anymore. They decided it was time for a change and decided to give Labour and the Greens a go. They couldn't, not going to go down that road. I look forward very much to working with the Greens. I think they have a great deal to offer Charmwood Borough Council, and I think they have a great deal to offer Charmwood, the electorate of Charmwood. The electorate have said it's time for a change, and that is what they're going to get, Madam Mayor. They're going to get some new ideas, they are going to get some new thinking, they're certainly going to get some new faces and perhaps a different future. One that puts the people of Charmwood in the driving seat and at the centre of our policies, not a constant diet of Tory party dogma. If you don't like it, I understand why you don't like it, but instead of criticizing us before we've even had a chance, perhaps you should take this opportunity to look at your own shortcomings and work out why you've lost. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Forrest. councillor Hamilton, would you like to sum up?
Madam Mayor, initially I had, shall we say, a fairly politically neutral speech prepared, as is the custom for an AGM when we're electing a mayor. However, I've had to quickly write a few, unfortunately, partisan notes because of the behaviour of the party opposite. But first of all, I can begin by stating on behalf of the Labour Group, we wish to be placed on record our thanks to the previous leader of the council, Jonathan Morgan, for his hard work and dedication in that role and the service to the people of Charmwood. I believe it should always be acknowledged and appreciated when such people are willing to give up so much of their time to public service. I am absolutely delighted to be nominating councillor Joe Meeah to be appointed leader of this council. His drive, his optimism, his boundless energy, and above all, his dedication to public service, I have no doubt he will be a great asset in leading Charmwood forward to a greener, more sustainable community that both delivers for and supports the needs of all our residents. It is recognised that we are living through a period that poses many challenges to our residents, but I know that councillor Meeah is fully aware of our duty to deliver for everyone. We find ourselves in a council where no one group has a majority. But that is not an unusual situation these days. And can I here point out that the Conservatives were heavily rejected? And I can also point out it was Green members that replaced Conservatives instead of the existing Conservatives. I can also point out that Labour is now represented throughout the borough and not just in Loughborough. Now, the situation we find ourselves in simply re-emphasizes the need to talk to and listen to each other with respect, and above all, ensure that the interests of the people of Charmwood are front and centre of all our decisions, rather than being excessively partisan. I am confident that councillor Joe Meeah is the ideal person to lead us through such times and will be an exemplar to us all. That is why I am happy to move that councillor Meeah be appointed as leader of the council for the council term 2023-24 to 2026-27. Thank you.
We are going to move to a named vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just for everyone's awareness, what will happen now is I will call out each individual councillor's name in alphabetical order. If you could indicate, saying you are for, against, or you abstain for the motion. Okay? councillor Ashcroft? councillor Baines? councillor Blackshaw? councillor Boca? councillor Bottomley? councillor Bradshaw? councillor Breaker? councillor Brooks? councillor Campbell? councillor Charles? councillor Corey Lowesley? councillor Harper-Davies? councillor Dent? councillor Ford? councillor Clare Forest? councillor Sandy Forrest? councillor Fox? councillor Fryer? councillor Goode? councillor Anne Gray? councillor Beverley Gray? councillor Haji Nikalau? councillor Hamilton? councillor Haynes? councillor Infield? councillor Jackson? councillor Jagida? councillor Jones? councillor Knight? councillor Lawrence? councillor Lenny? councillor Lowe? councillor Matthews? councillor Maynard? councillor Meeah? councillor Monk? councillor Needham? councillor Northidge? councillor O'Neill? councillor Palmer? councillor Popley? councillor Rattery? councillor Roberts? councillor Seton? councillor Smidowicz? Can do.
I'll abstain at the moment.
councillor Snart? councillor Taylor? councillor Nat Taylor? councillor Tilletson? councillor Wesley? councillor Woodward? councillor Worrall? Thank you, my colleagues, we'll just tot up the votes.
The vote is carried. I call on councillor Meeah to announce the appointments to the cabinet.
Madam Mayor, firstly, I'd like to thank council for appointing me leader of the council. I know the debate was a bit heated, and understandable that we've followed an election, and some members opposite are disappointed that they aren't forming an administration. But I just wanted to put on record that my door is always open. Yes, we are a minority administration supported by the Green members, but my door is always open to all members of the council. If you have any ideas, if you have any views and you think they aren't being aired or shared, please come, send me an email, pick up the phone, and I'm more than happy to discuss anything that you have to say. I wanted to thank the Labour Group and the Green Group for supporting me, and I think it's very important that that's put on record. But yes, we've got to change, we've got a new direction, and we're looking forward to the challenges that the future will bring. But I just want to put that we will look after the residents of Charmwood, be they voted Labour, Green, Conservative, Independent or any other party. The citizens of this borough come first before party politics. Madam Mayor, details of the appointments of the cabinet have been circulated on the pink sheets, or will be circulated shortly. Thank you. I move that.
Thank you, councillor Meeah. I call on councillor Boca to announce the Conservative Group's Shadow Lead member appointments.
Conservative Group's appointments to Shadow Lead member roles have been circulated on the blue sheets.
Thank you, councillor Boca. I now call on councillor Needham to announce the Green Group's spokesperson appointments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Details of the Green Group spokesperson appointments have been circulated on the green sheets. Thank you.
So item eight, political balance and appointment to committees for 2023 to 2024 are on page 21 of the agenda papers. You'll find that report setting out the background to appointments to committees and the proposed political balance calculations. The nominations for committees and proposals for chairs and vice-chairs can be found in the supplementary report. I call on councillor Meeah to propose the motion.
Madam Mayor, I move the recommendations and reasons one to four are set out on the supplementary agenda pack be approved.
Madam Mayor, I second this motion.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak? No, no hands. So I now would call on councillor Meeah to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing further to add.
So we're now moving to the vote? All those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? One. One over there. The vote is carried. So the final item on the agenda is item nine. The announcements, I have no mayoral announcements, and I call on the chief executive to make his announcement.
I have no announcements to make, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we're now reached the close of business. So thank you all for your attendance tonight and for listening so carefully. The next scheduled meeting of the council is scheduled for the 19th of June 2023. Please note that this meeting will be held at Loughborough University campus in the Edward Herbert Building. So the meeting now closes, and I look forward to talking with many of you. And if you could leave a little of the refreshments, we will be a few minutes, the bar will be open, and there will be some champagne to toast the King. So we also have our speakers for the charities. So if you would like to talk amongst each other while we go and dish robe, we will see you shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If you'd now like to proceed to the foyer area, where the drinks and light buffet reception will be available. Thank you.
Please have your glasses charged, Madam Mayor. Would you like to give the whole toast?
The King.
While you have your glasses charged, deputy lieutenant, ladies and gentlemen, would you please raise your glass in a toast to the Mayor and the Borough of Charmwood?
I'll drink to that.
Deputy Lieutenant, ladies and gentlemen, please pray silence for the worshipful of the Mayor of Charmwood, councillor Margaret Smidowicz.
Thank you, everybody, thank you for coming and thank you for staying. Can you hear at the back? Can you hear now? Yes, that's better, I'll try not to move. I sincerely have enjoyed tonight and seeing so many familiar faces and some new faces. I've already had the first invitation to an event while I was standing there, so it's already started. But I won't keep you, other than to say thank you, but I do have some speakers for my charities. And first of all, I'd like to welcome Amanda, who I met quite by chance, I've known her for a while, but I actually didn't know what she did. And when I found out, she was the answer to my prayers, literally. So Amanda Holmes, would you like to introduce yourself and all the things you're doing to help the head and neck cancer? And she'll tell you a little bit about it. So do come on. I hope you'd have it, not yet.
I think I'll have one after. Hello all, and thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Margaret, for inviting me to speak this evening about a subject that you were very passionate about. And may I start off by congratulating you on becoming the elected mayor of Charmwood? My name is Amanda, and I'm a millin dental therapist. I work for the Oxford University Hospitals NHS Trust as part of their specialist maxillofacial unit. Here we treat patients who unfortunately have been recently diagnosed with or who are being investigated for a suspected cancer of the head or neck. Margaret holds the subject of head and neck cancers very close to her heart. Many of you may be aware that Margaret lost her much-loved husband Frank to cancer in 2006, after seven years of nursing him through his cancer diagnosis and through numerous operations. The reason that Margaret has chosen to support head and neck cancers is she would like to use her experience of having a loved one who have received a cancer diagnosis and go through many treatments to help others. Margaret believes that using her privileged position in office to highlight the importance of early intervention and support the local organisations that are supporting people that are living in the East Midlands. I apologise now, but I'm a little bit of a statistic geek, so here's a little bit of knowledge for you all. And I do apologise that it may be a little bit heavy, so hopefully you've all got a little drink and some food so you can be kind. Head and neck cancer is the fifth most common cancer for men and the eighth most common cancer for females in the UK. And around 12,400 new cases are diagnosed each year. There are around 30 areas within the head and neck where cancer can develop, and mouth cancer being the most common type. According to Cancer Research UK, between 46 and 88% of head and neck cancers are actually preventable. 17 to 64% are linked to tobacco smoke exposure, and even chewing tobacco exposes a risk. Some 22 to 38% can be linked to alcohol consumption, so it's why you're all standing there with a glass in your hand. And this risk multiplies when alcohol and cigarettes are consumed together. So that's something to bear in mind. Around 1 in 80% are linked to a virus called HPV or human papillomavirus. Some of you may have children or grandchildren where you have heard about the HPV vaccine. Since 2008, there has been a campaign in schools to vaccinate girls aged 12 to 13 years of age. And after much research and actual outcry over the exclusion of boys, in 2019, boys were then vaccinated at in 2019, boys were then vaccinated at the same age. You may have heard about HPV being associated with cervical cancers, but there was a huge drive several years ago when a TV personality, Jade Goodie, was diagnosed on television with cervical cancer while she was taking part in Big Brother. After her death, more than half a million more women actually signed up for routine smear tests, and that's 70% higher than the normal average, and that's the power of media highlighting her tragic news. HPV doesn't just cause cervical cancer, it causes head and neck cancers along with a few others. It is paramount that head and neck cancers are detected as soon as possible, as early intervention provides a more favourable outcome. If treated early, the survival rate at five years is 95%, but this can reduce as much as life 50% if it's not caught early enough. For example, if it's spread to the neck or it's the size of a fingernail. Although treatment can be life-saving, it can also be debilitating and very much life-changing. Side effects from treatments such as difficulty in speaking, swallowing and a dry mouth can be felt for the rest of that person's life, so much so that a significant number of people do not actually return to work, and if they do, they return on reduced hours. If a person receives radiotherapy, their saliva glands are depleted, and in turn, this puts them at a far greater risk of developing dental decay along with many other problems or infections. Highlighting regular screening by a dental professional is paramount, and any changes such as a lump, a bump, a red spot, yellow spot, a mouth ulcer which doesn't resolve after around three weeks must be referred to a hospital under a two-week wait for specialist care. Head and neck cancer treatment has evolved in recent years, and with new chemotherapies and the advancement of digital technology, there is now intraoral scanning, which means within the mouth, and 3D printing available, and this means that a patient's anatomy can be replicated and restored much more intricately. NHS hospitals are investing in digital technology, therefore the wait for such specialist care reduces because the restorative process is faster using digital technology. Margaret would like to highlight her cancer of the head and neck and has produced a leaflet outlining her aims of how early diagnosis and intervention is so important. And I am so delighted that such a respected office can highlight such a worthy cause, and I hope that this will point people in the right direction for early detection and intervention. Margaret has also invited another speaker this evening to talk about the hard work that her charity supports, so I will hand over and allow her to introduce herself. Thank you all for listening, it's such a heavy topic, and you can't really kind of make head and neck cancers any better, but thank you very much for your support and enjoy the rest of your evening.
There is a representative here from John Storey House who have a cancer support group. So whatever is raised for head and neck cancer, part of that will go to John Storey House and the others to a group called The Swallows, and there's literature around. They send some fantastic material out and also lots of aids for people who have already got the head and neck cancer.
Still have they? Be quiet, please.
So I would also now like to introduce my second speaker, Owen Jones, who is well-known to one or two people here, who deals with the daily life of men and women in sheds. I have to say, I first met Owen in a bookshop, quite by chance, and didn't actually know where he was based, so it was a great pleasure. When Kath took me to see men in sheds and I found I knew him, so because I knew him, I roped him in.
Sure. First of all, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for taking us on, Men and Women in Sheds. My name is Owen, as you've heard, and I run the Men and Women in Sheds project in Loughborough on the Oaks industrial estate. It's a community facility since 2015, and it is a project run by Age UK, Leicestershire and Rutland. The original tenants for the shed are over 50, suffering from bereavement, illness, injury, breakup or loss of relationship. We now include those in recovery from strokes. The shed is seemingly instrumental in their recovery. We offer woodwork, pottery, metalwork and woodturning. We have a wonderful prize-winning garden at the back, now coming into its own for a place of quiet reflection. Two days a month, we conduct the Shed Memory Session, which is for those suffering from the early onset Alzheimer's or dementia. Sadly, this project is facing rising costs. We charge a membership fee, and we go out where we can do in table sales, fates, et And I believe that the benefits acquired by those that attend are, I would say, however priceless, beyond money. We would like your support for the Men and Women in Sheds, and thank you for listening.